Webinars being live.
Okay, so be good now.
But is it to commence recording seven? You stopped recording, so you need to start recording again.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, public comment, Sarah.
Sarah Fox, forty-sixth and St. I saw that for the second consecutive meeting, you have collected bargaining exemption for you today on your agenda. You are not in a period of collective bargaining. If you are reopening bargaining, you have to do that as a vote of public session. It would be completely egregious at this point, after putting our children through a strike to end this, to be doing anything to reopen that that contract, especially since the MTA, the state level, has been very vocal in their mailings and in their conferences, that their number one goal this year is to seek members on school committees and select boards that are favorable to the outcomes they want. After they pushed very hard to campaign for two new members, now you're potentially reopening bargaining for something our children and ten thousand students on the North Shore will withhold their civil right to a public education for. So I sure hope you're not entertaining, changing anything in that contract, especially without doing it in open session first. Because if you are indeed bargaining, you have to vote to do it. There needs to be documentation. There's a very prescriptive process that we have followed in the past and has to be followed. And if you are doing anything outside of this, it is not only an open meeting violation, it is an ethics violation. And I will be following this very closely. The second topic that I want to talk about is sadly what happened in our community a couple of days ago. In May of twenty twenty-four, we had our youth behavior risk survey presentation, during which it showed more than one in four of every one of our high school students reported riding in a vehicle with someone under the influence. At that time during a public meeting, I brought up several times that this needed to be addressed, given the history of our town, that clearly those numbers are shown, that they weren't just riding with other peers, but their parents are modeling this behavior. I begged to get ahead of this before it happened again. Fast forward a year later, our youth risk behavior server came out again, same data, maybe one or two percentage points in one, one area or another. We have to stop sugarcoating and glamorizing what is happening to these kids and happening in our town. This is a community issue. Reach out to a school committee member, I reach out to other elected officials. You need a task force, not just in the school committee. It needs membership from the school committee, the select board, the Department of Health, parent representation, because until this community starts to acknowledge that this is starting in the homes, that parents are socially hosting these parties, that parents are turning a blind eye to this happening, that we're glamorizing when it happens, another kid will tragically meet the same end. We can't do these risk behavior surveys, see these outcomes and do nothing. I know people think it happens in the, that this education can only happen in the schools. That's not right. It starts in the home. They're seeing this at home, but they also need a wraparound service from the schools, from the Department of Health, from the select board, everyone. Because these kids are, the, the, the over one in four kids, they're being driven by their parents too. That's what they're seeing first, is that mom and dad, or a few pops at the yacht club, or at trivia night, or whatnot, drive the babysitter home, drive them home from the party. It's not okay. We're modeling this for our kids and we really, I'm begging you to do a true collective effort in our town to talk about this. Do not let another child's tragedy be in vain. Please. I would love to be part of any solution, but what I won't be part of is sweeping this under the rug again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I am. Okay. I see Sarah has her hand raised. Sarah, can you hear us?
You need to make her a panelist. Or ask her to unmute.
Sarah, it looks like you're muted on this end from our, my perspective.
You need to ask her to unmute.
Sarah, can you hear me? Can you please unmute? Sarah, you, you need to unmute. All right. Sarah, I apologize, but we cannot hear you.
She's logged in again, so.
Yeah, I've asked her to unmute. Oh, looks like that might, my mind just worked now. Sarah, can you hear us?
I can, can you hear me?
Yep, now we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Sorry, I had the thing, I had the microphone disabled. You know, I just wanted to reiterate, reiterate what Sarah Fox said about, you know, this is definitely a teachable moment. And as everybody knows in this town, you know, it's always been swept under the rug with, you know, drugs and alcohol with our kids, and we really need to take this seriously. My daughter's going into high school and is very, very nervous. You know, I know that we, we put forth before, you know, certain ideas of what we could do, but nothing's really ever come into action. And I think that the school committee really needs to take it seriously and do something about this. It's not a joke. You know, it's, we need to show our kids. You know, I've been talking to a lot of kids and a lot of parents, and it seems like the kids are more outraged than the parents. Like this is some sort of normal thing in Marblehead. And, you know, we really need to show our kids that we're going to stand up for them and that this is not going to be allowed. And just like Sarah said, yes, it starts in the home. And unfortunately, we all know too well that, you know, parents are allowing this in their home. And we need to do some sort of education in our schools, not only for our kids, but for the community. So that's that topic. And then I just wanted to ask the school committee if they are going to respond to my August sixth, you know, email back to you guys in regards to the steps that you're going to take for our community and students against anti-Semitism, because I haven't heard back.
All right, is that, you done, Sarah?
I am.
Thank you. I just want to remind folks to, before your comment, your name and address, please. So Tom.
Tom, it man, sixteen Shorewood Road, along the Board of Health. I had no intention of speaking when I came here. Everyone, if you follow me, you know, this is a very, something I've been talking about for some time. I grew up in this town. I lived it. I drank and drove in high school, so did all my friends. I don't believe the surveys. I mean, I told immediately I'll talk about it. They, they're written wrong. When you write a survey to say, high schoolers, have any of you ever drank and drove? What's the problem? Do they all have licenses? So how are they even going to respond to that with an accurate number? Right? Those things need to be reworded. You need to, you need to change these for the students to make it so they're directed at what you're actually facing here. So you get accurate numbers. I mean, I still don't buy it. Yeah, I mean, I grew up, I, I still, from what I understand from talking to my friends who still, I, I still think the numbers are underrepresented. And it needs to be addressed. And this, it's not as, it's not just a school issue, you know, it's, it's a, you know, I'm sure you guys are going to catch a lot of heat for this, but it is a Marblehead culture issue. And it's one that we always brush over the rug, and it goes everywhere. How many students you heard of with DUIs? I haven't. So the police department, you know, they're complicit in it too. You know, parents, you know, everyone knows in town that there was parents that just, you know, let it happen at their houses, you know, hoping like, well, at least if it's my house and at least my kid won't be out there driving and stuff like that. And what I was dismayed to find out yesterday is denied.
Tom, just a few more seconds.
We all know that fog did not kill James Colante. And the more we lie about that in the community, the worse off everyone else is. And I'm looking forward to moving, you know, putting something together, working for this, I've been trying to, I've come to schools, there's roadblocks. The word trigger keeps coming up. Trigger the hell out of them. That's what they need. I was in the school when this happened. You know, I saw it. I know how it is to be a student. Trigger the hell out of them. Get, get rid of that shit. And let's move forward, I'll help. You know, my board's in.
All right, that concludes public comment. The next item up is district updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, good evening. It's with a heavy heart that I share our district updates. I want to reiterate our sincere condolences to Savannah's family at this very difficult time. We've had our counselors poised and ready at Vets in high school to provide our students, staff and community partners support, and will continue to ensure extra support is in place as school begins. I want to thank our counselors, counseling team for their unwavering commitment to the work they do. So. It's been a tough week, sure. This is, this is, this kind of stuff is hard to talk about, so, you know, I get emotional, so I'm just bear with it a little bit. Our newly developed district motto is moving forward together. This sad situation makes the motto even more pertinent. Reminds us that we need to be there for one another and support each other in all aspects of our lives. As the school year begins, we are finishing up facilities upgrades and enhancements. Glover HVA system is in and they are ensuring it is operating effectively. The playground may not quite be completed as planned based upon delivery of equipment and the ability of the company to get onsite and redo the rubberized portions. It's been something we've been working on since, we talked about it. We're at the mercy of the, at the company. They, they assured us they would have everything in place and on board before school starts. A little bit behind, Mike Tiffling, I think is on Zoom somewhere, is working diligently with the company. So we're hopeful that, you know, we'll get it, still get it in before Wednesday, but at least portions of it will be completed, so we'll work through that. So I just want to share that update, because I know there's a lot of people asking. The Vets pack is all done. The walls and ceilings have been repainted with the same color that they were before. And the seats are reupholstered and reinstalled, and it looks great. It's just really sharp looking, so I'm glad that we were able to get that done. The village scoreboard was installed and is ready for action. Painting, refinishing of floors, scooting up across the district has gone well. Our custodial staff is hard at work, providing finishing touches across the district. Rex and Parker tidying up our exteriors, and we should be looking good for opening day. I took a ride around again today, most of the, I know there was some, the cover was looking a little shaggy, but it looked great this afternoon when I drove by. So I think, you know, Rex and Parker is getting out there and doing what they've, they've been tasked with, so I'm glad for that. And also like to make mention that the district now possesses its first 7D electric van to begin alignment, to begin alignment with some of the Green Marblehead initiatives. So it's, I mentioned it before, but we got it, we have it. It's, you know, it's stenciled, it looks great. It's going to be, it's a great addition to our fleet, and it's eco-friendly, so I'm very excited about that. This last week, we held our leadership, I'm sorry, this week we held our Leadership Institute where our leadership teams came together to prepare for the upcoming year. It's a bevy of activities and there's a lot of great team building and preparation taking place under the direction of Julia and her instructional coaching team. Tomorrow, we will welcome our new staff to the district right here in the library, first thing tomorrow morning. We will meet together with the admin team and staff, set expectations, and set, set the stage for the start of the school year. On Monday, all our staff will meet at Vets in the morning, where I will welcome everyone back. And then they will head off to their respective schools for time with their principals and their teams. On Tuesday, we'll have another day of PD and preparation, and then we'll excitedly welcome the students back on Wednesday. That's all my updates for this evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, thank you. Move on to the consent action and agenda items. I'm going to do them separately to allow people to make comments around the minutes. So I, I'd like for a motion to approve the identified schedules of bills totaling nine hundred and eighteen thousand, thirty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents.
So moved.
Seconded.
So any discussion? Okay, we'll move to a vote. Jen?
Favor.
Henry?
Favor.
Kate?
In favor.
Al, in favor. So, building, so subcommittee, you know, I know that they're, you know, we all know that they're open to, to open meeting law. Do their meeting minutes get approved by the school committee or just the?
No, they get approved in the subcommittee.
In the, okay. So just for people who are following on the agenda, we're not going to then, that, that was my mea culpa, my mistake. I put building subcommittee meetings on the agenda. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes of August fourth and August seventh of the school committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have some edits to the minutes. There are some things that are specifically set forth in, I'm fine with the substance of them, but there are some things that the open meeting law requires be included in our minutes, like the location where it was held, documents that were used. So I'm happy to move forward and approve the minutes, and I'll work with Henry to make sure that those things are added in.
Thank you.
Can you, when you submit the drafts, make sure those are ready to go? Like the draft, in other words, the draft should have, should be ready to go, like with the location.
All right, we'll, we'll go to a vote. Jen?
In favor.
Henry?
Favor.
Kate?
In favor.
Al, in favor. Okay, we'll move on to the school communication and discussion items. The first one is around an upgrade to the handbooks, and I believe Superintendent, you're going to.
Yeah, so, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in the Dropbox, we put the updated, the proposed updates, the thing, and I, it was my fault I didn't hit the, like, accept the changes. So I'm going to just pass out, actually, accept the changes, and it changed the language a little bit, and I think it'll make more sense. So I'll just, I'll just let you know, and where it's read, it says Marblehead Public Schools utilizes the student family handbook to notify parents, guardians, that when we accept the change, it sends from, the change from notified to obtain consent from parents and guardians. So I'm going to just share that with everybody so they can see it. So that, you know, that, that will make a little bit more sense while we're talking about this handbook change and how it relates to one of our policies.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chairman.
So. So I think, I'm actually, Julia, I think, is, is better equipped to have a conversation in regard to, to the handbook changes. She, she works, she works closely with the language and the folks, and so I just kind of want to turn it back over to her, but I just wanted before, you know, I want to share that, you know, that update was, it's just because I didn't accept actual changes that were, you know, except them on a screen, so that's why we pulled it together, so. Julia?
We've been recently talking about the policy ILD, and I really appreciated the committee's feedback. So basically, where we landed, and I think we needed to still have some clarity on what was finally approved and if it was approved or not, but basically, we're, we're aligned with, we're moving forward with, with a line within ASC, right? That, that families will consent to the surveys, and there will be an opt-out as well. So what we're looking at is how to operationalize that, and this is already in our handbooks. So when we're talking about getting ready for the year, and we looked at the handbooks, we talked about ILD, really made me think about how we need to think about operationalizing ILD. And so everything in the black font and, and type is, has been in our handbook for years. What I've done in the red section and with some feedback, thought about how we can use our handbook to put the ILD into action. So how can we operationalize it? And ILD basically says that, that families have the right to, will consent and have the right to opt out. And there's a list of eight items, and they're listed on the back of this page. So what we'd like to do is use the handbook to obtain consent from our families, yet we will still always give the opt-out as we approach, within a timely manner, as we approach any survey within those eight items that are listed. So essentially, if we, if the committee wants to approve this for the handbook language, it would be updated language just to say that families are consenting, but you still do have the opportunity to opt out. This helps us operationalize when we're talking about high school survey with eight hundred students. We would have that consent because they've approved the handbook, but they would still have the opportunity to opt out with plenty of notice, as it does say in the law. I just wanted to.
Yeah, can I just, can I just add, Mr. Chairman? So the ILD section that I think has been kind of bantered back and forth, and I, this still has to go back to the subcommittee, I know that, back to the school committee, but in ILD, the, our current, in our current policy manual, is, is the ASC version from, I think was approved in two thousand and eighteen. It's been since updated in two thousand and twenty-three, very minor language changes. So I think that subcommittee is going to look at that. But currently, part of the verbiage is without the written, without the prior written consent of the student's parent guardian or the student if he or she is eighteen years old, and that lists all those things. So there's been some confusion going back forth, is it opt-in, is it opt-out? Without prior written consent is like, the piece has been confusing. But what Julie was just explaining, and I just want to kind of reiterate it, was by signing off on the handbook, you're providing, the way that handbook's written, by signing off on the handbook, you're providing the written consent, and then the handbook also allows for the opt-out for those areas that you need to. So I don't know if that helps clarify a little bit, some of the back and forth confusion, I think, then, but that myself had as well, but that's, that's what. So I just want to share that as well. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Do you want to make the motion and have the discussion, or do you want to do it before?
I was just about to make a motion, but, all right, I'll make the motion, then we'll do the discussion. So looking for a motion to approve the proposed updates. I'm sorry, the proposed updates to the MPS handbooks. Go onto the notification of rights under the Protection of Pupil Rights Amendment, PPRA.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay.
Discussion?
Yeah, there's a lot of issues here. First of all, I don't agree with this at all. So a couple of things. First of all, we have not approved policy ILD, so we're referencing to approve a handbook that depends on ILD, which we haven't approved. So that's a bit of cart before the horse. Secondly, you're asking for blanket consent, which I absolutely do not agree with, to these, to these surveys. In fact, I'm not even sure that that's legal. I don't know if you spoke to counsel on this. I strongly suggest that we refer to counsel on this, because I don't even know if we can do this or not. I also think that it is sort of buried in this, and you're saying that you're, you're, you're asked, or I guess, asking for blanket consent with an opt-out, but that is not the spirit of policy ILD. And if a parent doesn't sign the handbook, what, what does that? You know, how do you operationalize that? And how do they even know that? The handbook is a hundred pages long. So I don't think that this personally, I don't, I'm one person think that this is a valid way to operationalize what we may approve in policy ILD. You haven't, they haven't done that yet.
So can I just follow up too? Because I think, so our current policy ILD is, is what this is referring to now with the potential of it being updated. So if, if the, if the ILD gets updated, we would have to go back and change the handbook again, because school starts on Wednesday, so I wanted to make sure that we had the right handbook. So this, this, this update to the handbook refers to our current ILD policy, which is still from two thousand and eighteen.
Well, then this must be an error, because the current, if you're saying the current handbook is giving blanket consent, the current policy, the current policy doesn't have consent. The current policy says opt-out.
No, the current policy says without prior written consent. What we're saying is that, is the handbook, signing off on the handbook would provide, would be providing the consent, and then the, the language about being able to opt out, whether we have, we give other, you know, we let them opt out. And, and what I can say is, this is, we get, I mean, we get out of the conversation, and it's up to the committee, but at the end of the day, you know, I've seen this in, in other situations. And for instance, oh, for photos, so, so like, if you opt in, you know, the handbook says, you, you basically consent to having your child's photo, I don't know if ours is, but in my previous life, you know, you're, you basically consent to, you know, sign off on the handbook, it can sense, so you keep being, you know, photo for, you know, whatever's in school. And if you don't want that, you, right, you know, you provide written opt-out consent. So that's one, one example on this I look at similarly, so.
I think that, I do think it's a little bit different in that it's surveys. So you're asking also for blanket consent, which apparently we've been doing. Shame on me that I didn't know that. And you don't even have the surveys given. I mean, do we have sample surveys? Because you don't do, I mean, some of these surveys happen in the spring.
Right, so nothing would change in our continuous process of notification and providing an opt-out. So we would still be in.
But we should be providing an opt-in, is what the new ILD policy is.
So I was working off of, was on the Marblehead School Committee website with the ILD that's approved and uploaded. So that's one I was working on, that.
I mean, we can do that, I'm, I'm going to abstain, we can do that, but we are, we are going to be meeting next week, I think. It's on the agenda, and if we change policy ILD, then we're going to have to change the handbook.
Correct. Yeah, and that's what I, that's what I just, I just, I mean, we have to be, well, we may have, we may be able to, we not.
Yeah, we don't, I don't know what the committee's going to.
No, no, I mean, we may not need to change the handbook, because it depends on how it's written. So right now, it's the ASC one, the one that's on ASC has the same exact language about the written thing. If we do the one that he had proposed before, which was the opt-in, what I heard was opt-in option is going to work. So we went back to the ASC, so that's where the confusion, but the subcommittee has that, has, is tasked with that, to bring that back. But either way, for starting school on Wednesday, this, this, this would provide us the opportunity to do that. And then, just like anything else, if something changes from, from the school committee, then we, we make the adjustments. That's why we do the, decides we do the handbook electronically this week.
Well, I also think the spirit of this, from my perspective, and I'm only one person here, is to, to be transparent and to give parents the information beforehand with some of these sensitive surveys. This is the feedback we've received in the past. And, and parents don't ever see this often. So that's.
Well, with this, on the census surveys, that's, I would, I would push back a little bit, but the census survey that we absolutely do notify, it's the surveys that, you know, are, are around, like, collecting, you know, some of the data, whatever, but like, for surveys that are, especially these eight things, we absolutely will, if we have it in capacity, that's, that's what we're tasked with.
To my knowledge, we have, I've never, as a parent, I never received it.
And that may be, I can't speak to that, but I can speak to the fact that it says right in this handbook that for these eight areas, which all sensitive stuff is outlined in the policy, that we have to directly notify, the district will directly notify parents by email, and students are scheduled to participate in specific activities or surveys that concern the following. And this is, you know, political affiliation, mental, sex, behavior, legal, da, 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 da. Parents will be provided reasonable notification of the planned activity and surveys listed above. They will be provided an opportunity to opt-in, try out such activities and services.
I think it's important to also read further down the page that the handbook language provides that parents will have an opportunity to review, you know, the surveys. And so this, what this is tracking is the statute that it's based on, which requires written consent for anyone under eighteen and an opportunity to review and opt out. And it really is sort of a belt and suspenders.
But it's not really in that, in my perspective, it, you know, at the beginning of the school year, in a hundred-page document, you're getting blanket consent. I, as a parent of a high school student, never received anything, ever. Now, that may change, right? So you're giving a blanket consent in August for something that's going to happen, you know, next spring, and so, and don't see it. So I think that the spirit of this may be lost.
Believe if I could have completed what I was saying, you know, the impetus is now really on the administration to make sure that when these surveys are conducted, that opt-out is happening. I mean, that's, it's not just what you write on the paper, it's how you operationalize.
I agree.
Your procedure.
I agree.
I think there's some updates that just, we want to look at no matter where the committee lands. I mean, we, we don't use US Mail to notify families of surveys. We, we only do the email, so I mean, that's just the reality of what we're doing. So I just want to, from what was in the original language, I do just think we should look at some general updates of how we are really putting this into place. And so whether it's to obtain consent or to just notify, you know, to the point made of, we don't have all the dates. We really don't. Our educators come back on Monday, and we'll start that work together. But there's language in here that will let them know at the beginning of the year, if we have, if, beginning of the year has identified specific and approximate dates, and we don't have that. So at least the handbook is acknowledging that we will be communicating that via email, so people, families can rest assured that we will be doing that with plenty of time to opt out.
Yeah, I, I guess ideally, it would be nice to change the policy, have the handbook match that. But we don't have, I don't believe we have that luxury, given, right, the start of school next week. And I also, if I'm hearing correctly, blanket consent, and they're valid concerns, but it exists today, so we're not altering that in any way. So like, you know, I think it makes sense to approve what you, you've suggested here, at least personally. And, you know, when we make changes, we'll, you know, we'll understand that we have to make the ripple effect and make the changes where else it's needed, whether it's the handbook, regardless, so. Is there any more discussion? Is there any more discussion? Before we move to a vote? Okay, Jen?
Same.
Henry?
In favor.
Kate?
In favor.
Al in favor, uh, motion passes. Three. Three, four, and one abstention.
Who made the motion?
Kate.
Good. Uh, our next item is proposed updates to the N P S bullying intervention and prevention plan. I believe Lisa Murray, you're gonna.
Yeah.
Lead us through this.
Um, so um. This uh bullying intervention. Plan was vetted by our um attorney, Matt McAvoy. Uh, most of the changes were more grammatical than. Uh, anything else. Um. Some updates uh to the plan that you received. Um. Were around um. New language that is used um as part of the bullying. Uh, statute here in the state of Massachusetts. So, for example, instead of um having it be. And a perpetrator aggressor. And instead of having um the terminology also perpet- perpetrated to aggressor and also um. Is um. Not victim, it's now target. So that language has been changed throughout um the safety plan. I have I have presented the plan as required by law uh to our administrative team last week during our um leadership uh meeting. Uh, we will continue to provide training. Um, I know there might have been some questions about how we provide the professional development. Um, in working with Assistant Superintendent Ferrera. We are um adding as part of our arcs and training mandatory training at the beginning of the year. Um, so if this is approved tonight, uh, that will be included um for the staff to uh review. As well as our building principals, uh, will be using a presentation that was shared with them last week with their um building staff as well, too. Um. It is also uh going to be updated on our website. Make, I feel like we need to make it a little bit more forward facing, you want to digging, trying to find it, but I know that the district. I T department's working really hard to update our our website as well. Um. Guys, I don't know if anyone had any questions. There is.
I I didn't have any questions, Lisa Murray. Thank you for doing that. Uh, what I still couldn't find is, and this is tangential, is the. Title nine. Like who the title nine. Officers are like where would, is that on the website?
It is on the website, and that would be me. Uh.
But where would, I don't know where.
Not, yeah, it, I think, you know, we're working and I'm working with Steve, um, or Husky, uh.
Right, check.
Sorry, Steve. Um, to make things a little bit more in the in the forefront of our our website.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, he's he's working to update the website to have form that is probably be more user friendly anyway, and we'll make sure, you know, Lisa Murray have this thing. I know she did a good job making sure those very important things are. Forward facing more than much so than they are. So some things are, you know, they're buried within within departments, and sometimes that's hard when you're looking for stuff, it's like searching and. So it's it's never easy, but we'll 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 do our best to kind of put that out there so people don't want to look. That's a good point, Jen, thanks.
And you only one change that's not reflected um in the. Final version, and there's one little mistake. It says that. Parents uh and families will be notified after the investigation has been concluded. That's not accurate. Parents. Uh, will be notified for both the alleged uh victim and for the aggressor um prior to the investigation starting. Just as uh informational. So I will make that one little change.
So so just. For the sake of argument, if the committee goes to don't move him, that changes, just make sure that's in motion that we. We change it with with the with the minor adjustment that is.
All right, so um I'm looking for a motion to accept the proposed updates. With the edit that Lisa Murray discussed. Uh, at the end of the document uh to our uh N P S bullying innovation intervention and prevention plan. Any further discussion?
I'll move the motion.
Suppose seconded.
All right, go to a. A vote, Jen?
In favor.
Henry?
Favor.
Kate?
In favor.
Al in favor, the motion passes four. To zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Lisa Murray. Um. The next item has to do uh around our high school roof project members. So at our last meeting, we voted to form. Uh, a high school roof subcommittee with Henry as chair. And per policy P D E, the committee chair, subject to approval by this committee. Will appoint its members. So um. I would like to put forward to appoint Ralph Wallace and Sam Altucher as community members to the high school roof subcommittee.
So. Uh, just by matter of. Good governance and transparency, this is not typically how we assign subcommittee or assign committees to any type of building committee. Usually there's a. Period of time where people are requested to submit statements of interest. I didn't. I wasn't asked to have anybody, you know, do that. I didn't see any advertising for it. I also didn't see any of the names. In the Dropbox. So normally we would see those in advance. Um, versus being asked to. Prove names of, I don't know any background of these people, I don't.
So Henry, can you address that, please?
Sure, I mean, uh, we did put notice in the papers for people to reach out um to join the. If they were interested, I got. Two people who contacted me, and that these are the two names, um.
I mean, usually we do social media, we send out to the community probably after school started, so parents would see. Um. We would try to do a pretty robust. Blanket. Solicitation.
Well, we are still waiting for, John, you still have to make your recommendations um for this, so as we discussed, and so if.
If we want, yeah, that's the sound, so.
If we want to publicize this more wide widely, I I'd be happy to. I think these two names are really good. I'm happy to. Give you some background on them.
Well, I mean, typically, if you're asking me to approve something, I should.
Yeah, I was hoping that, yeah, it would be. Um, speaking a little bit about their qualifications.
Okay, but normally I would see that, I mean, that's.
Jen, that's that's my, that's my mistake, right? Next time I will put the, I will put the members into the agenda specifically.
That's tip, this is how we have done this in the past, and it's in the spirit of. Again, transparency and good governance that we are really blanket, you know, blanketing the community and soliciting a number we'd love. I would have thought we would have had a number of people if it was well advertised that would be interested, I would think, just given the. Interest of this project, and this is important to people in town. And then secondly, we should have the opportunity to review this intervention.
Yeah. I'll come back in the next meeting. With. And and provide you with some uh some information.
It's waiting until the next meeting delay. Needed to be doing with.
I agree. I think we can. Continue to move this project along in the buildings subcommittee. For now, until. But we have a fully formed roof committee. Um. So I I don't think, I mean, it's not going to delay anything.
Won't move it along. Can I just chime in for a second? Mr. Chairman, um, so yeah, I I just want to make sure, you know, I mean, obviously you need to take right steps, and you know, um. For the for the um roof committee, but I would definitely, I I, because I want to say the pre-bid, I will give them, obviously, you can this the. Uh, August twentieth, when I suppose come in, I think we have a period of time to look at that, so. Yeah, I think the uh. Subcommittee is gonna have to do that work about recommendation to this committee, I think, because I can't, we can't delay it. So it just, it just can't happen because we delay that piece. Definitely, we're not going to put the full, we need to, so I just want to. I questioned this before, and I know it's it's a it's a logistics thing, but I just want to make sure that.
But I think ultimately it's the school committee that needs to vote. So however, that vote gets the school committee on time, which maybe, I don't know, if it's the September fourth meeting.
Or if we have to look at, yeah, it um. Yeah, once in the twentieth is the is the pre-bid like duty, and it is a period by which we have to select them. And then September eight sounds like it's ringing in my head, but but the fourth uh. But we'll we'll look at that, and I I just want to make sure we're staying on track, so I'll work with Mike, um, well, the the actual. Time last week, make sure we meet those, but yeah.
As long as it gets to the school committee.
Right, that was my point, that was my point, at least that first vote, however we get there, because you guys have to make that vote regardless, like.
I think this blood board does too.
So so Jen, if if Henry gives more background on these two individuals.
Well, how many people on the committee, what's a quorum, like I, like, you know, because you're gonna need a quorum of the commit of whatever this committee is.
Right, but right now we're just adding two members. We can always, and we will add more members, right?
Well, so. I mean, this is a fairly short period of time, so, you know. Whatever. I'm just saying, I can't vote for. People I don't know who they are. That's all I'm saying. So if you want to come back at a future meeting, that's fine. I think in the meantime. You know, either the facility subcommittee can edit, or frankly, Mike with the O P M and John and the and the um. Designer can come forward to the school committee with the recommendation.
Yeah, I think I think that may be the way we have, just for this first piece to it. I mean, there's gonna be multiple layers of this, and we're gonna bring stuff back to the school committee, and I'll go away. This first piece is really important. And just for folks edification, I mean, between Mike, M C P P L, John's M C P P L. Uh, you know, the left field, um, R D A and stuff, um, there's enough people. Um, that can, I think, make a recommendation for us to think back, so. Um, you know, we clearly want people to have, you know, knowledge about roofs and stuff on the on the committee, um, for sure, but. You know, it's 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 time, it's the time to think more, you know, so.
Yeah, so Jen, I just want to be clear, because I thought I heard a little while ago that there was an August twenty-eighth meeting.
Well, the bids, I want, I believe the bids are the pre-bid. Documentation is due by the twenty eighth, so and then we have a period of time, I want to say it's ten days.
I imagine it's to approve the bidders.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there's got to be, there'll be X number of bidders, and some based on the recommendation of. The experts here, or the, you know, the various procurement people will say that maybe, you know, bidder A, B, and C aren't. Good for the following reasons or don't.
Well, no, so so, well, reel it back a little bit. So this is just the pre-bid. This is just identifying who was able to then go for a bid. So this this part is important, but the the bid bid is the real part. Um, I think Mike has his hands up. Maybe he can speak more intelligently than I can to this part.
I'm not sure it's more intelligently, but um. The the pre qualification process, that that is what Brit- potential bidders need to apply. To say, hey, I want to bid on this project, and here are my qualifications. Here are the projects I've done. Here's my financial backing. Here's uh the size of my company. Here's, you know, the number of years I've been in business. There'll be a bunch of pre qualif- qualifications that they need to meet. Every company that meets the pre qualification list will be allowed to bid on the project. But they need to, they need to submit that they want to be pre qualified by August twenty eighth. So so what are we um seven days away from that right now? That is not selecting a bidder, that is not awarding a contract, that is just qualifying people. Or disqualifying people, won't be, depending on how you want to look at it, uh, who can or cannot bid on the project. Then after that, uh, probably right about the same time as that, we will probably be putting the bid out on the street. For the actual construction. And that is when when we get that back, I think we're gonna have to have some some decisions made about whether we're gonna put a. Recover a new a new layer on top of the existing layer. Or or put a coating on top of the existing layer, a um, a liquid applied barrier. That is where school committee and the advisors are really going to help us uh make those decisions.
Okay.
Yes, I'm I'm confident we'll be able to figure out the pre-bid stuff for the next meeting for September fourth. That's if that doc, if that date works um for the pre-bid, you know, pre-bid selection. Between the folks that I just talked about, we can.
Right, yeah, so as long as we can agree, so it sounds like. The impact is minimal at most, and. Um, I'd like us to agree on, we'll try to have the the other members all in place on the September fourth meeting.
Well. But we'd have to vote it at the September fourth.
Right, that that's for us to be prepared to vote on those members. So that means that. You know, sounds like we we want more widespread. Announcement of it, and so we can, you okay with that, Henry?
Of course.
Okay. All right, so given that, I'll uh I'll withdraw the motion. Okay, the next item um. Is a charter committee review, and Kate?
Yeah, so um. Amy Drinker, who's the chair of the town charter committee, sent an email um to Al and me. Um, they're, the committee is looking for school committee feedback. On draft B of the charter, I believe this is sort of like the second round of the charter. Um, and they're going to different departments and boards and committees that are discussed in the charter and asking them all to do this. Um, they're specifically looking for feedback around whether. There are factual inaccuracies in the description of the committee and. How we're established and what we do. Um, but the pertinent article. That addresses the school committee is Article six, section eight. Um, and there's a deadline of Monday, October sixth for the for the response. And so Al and I just thought it made sense to come to the committee and. Have a discussion about how we want to go about providing that feedback to the charter committee. They have a form um that they're asking to have filled out. Um. But, you know, does the full committee want to review the charter, that charter section and have a discussion at a future meeting? Do we want to designate someone? To review it on behalf of the committee? So. Um, I've looked at it. I certainly need to look at it in more detail. It is not, you know, a particularly lengthy. Um, amount of material to review.
I think we, I'd be happy designating someone to look at. For that level of language.
Okay. Um. Kate, would you be comfortable in doing that on our behalf?
I would. Do you um? Would the committee want me to report back on? On that, or just go ahead and accept? Okay.
Yeah.
I will do that.
Okay. Thank you. So there's a um. A mass M A S C conference coming up in the middle of November. Um, John, if you could just, superintendent, just put you on the on the spot and just help us understand what that is.
So.
Then we could discuss who might be appropriate members to to attend that.
So um, there's two conferences that the the state kind of runs. Uh, one is the M A S S, the Mass Association Superintendent, School Superintendent's Conference, that's the one in July. That generally superintendents, assistant superintendents go to. We all went this past July. I've been going for a dozen years or so. Um, great, great conference. And then in November, they join uh M A S S, joined with the M A S C and the Mass Association School Committees, and they do a joint conference um. Uh, November twelfth to the fourteenth. So generally what happens is the school committee, there's two things. One. Uh, we kind of decide as the admin team who wants who would like to attend, and we make that decision. But then the school committee, it's more like, you know. Who wants to go, who can go, you know, it's kind of up to the committee to decide. Um, sometimes there's school, there's schools that all the committees go. Sometimes it's just chairs. Sometimes it's just just some people can only go one day out of the three or whatever. So that's kind of up to up to the committee. The other piece is the committee, it's my understanding, the committee is supposed to uh appoint a delegate. To the to the um, to the conference, and that delegate, there'll be um a list of uh. Items that they put out and say, here's, here's, here's what we're thinking about, and you know, legislative things or whatever, and that delegate, we're supposed to discuss that as a school committee, all those issues. And the delegate is supposed to kind of say, here's our stance in Marblehead, based like, you know, um. I forget the word for it, but the, you know, number one, and we say, you know, we we don't, we agree with this, or we don't agree with it.
It's a vote, so it's a it's a slate of of items that.
Okay. So, yeah, so but so that's.
The delegate is empowered by the committee to cast.
Yes, so those are, those are two things that.
Which, by the way, we've never done.
Okay, so I couldn't remember if we did last year, it was a little bit of a blur last year around November, but um. Sure, I, uh, but so tonight is, I think, just the discussion about the conference itself, which I feel, you know, it's generally, I feel it's usually a pretty good conference, because it sometimes it replicates some of the stuff that happened with the superintendents, so it kind of pulls the school committees into. A lot of the same topics that we talked about. Sometimes there's things that are really more geared toward, I I found the last couple of years is more geared towards school committees than superintendents, to be honest with you. It used to be more replication of M A S S one, and then the school committees were kind of like what's happening. So I think the last two years I I found was was much better than the previous years that went. So anyway, there's usually a lot of good, um, you know. Just breakout sessions, just keynote speakers, uh, the whole night yards, and there's the one day that the delegate has to go and. You know, ask the, ask the role for the behalf of the committee, so. And then. What I would say is anyone that's willing or wants to go, Lisa Manning manages that, and we'll try to, I don't know, I don't. You got, I think I shared, yeah, I think what you guys said, but um, there should be an early bird special that we try to get in on, so it saves a few dollars, um. So and then, you know, she should book it, she'll book it, book the hotel and. That's what I have, but you know, I know it's a spend, so share.
Are there, um, what's the budget around this? What if?
We usually budget for all of all members to go.
Excuse me?
We budget for all.
For all of us? Okay, good. Thank you, Jen. Um, and the early bird special, it's, is it before the September fourth meeting?
Well, I just gave, I gave you guys all the, the, I think it's in that documentation I gave you. I didn't memorize the date, but um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The what?
September fifth is the.
Usually if people want to go, they just let Lisa know and she'll try.
Okay, so there's nothing we need to do through the.
No, no.
Maybe if we wanted to uh, point a delegate.
Well, we have till November.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah.
It's just, um, yeah, I would say if if whoever's will wants to go and um, look at the 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 days or what's, you know, basically outlined. And just let Lisa Manning know, yes, I want to go, I want to go all of it. I want to go one day or just I'm not staying over. I'm just going to go down. I don't know if you guys are going to drive the cable one day, but um, that happened a lot on my other job. Um, but you know, those are things that you just decide and let it know. Because there are menu items of like, you know, they can do lunch, you can do the dinner and those all have costs associated. So just. Try to be mindful of that. If you're not going to go to the dinner, don't spend the seventy five dollars on the rubber chicken they're going to serve. It's, you know, better off going. That's my advice.
Alright. Any further discussion on this? Okay. And superintendent also wanted to discuss a donation.
Yes, we we see the making end uh, donation for Making Ends Meet Incorporated, uh, Foundation Incorporated for five hundred dollars. Uh, to the Brown School. Um, it's it's, it was in your packet as a blanket donation and I came to find out that it wasn't for blankets. Um, it's actually a blanket donation to the school. Um.
I restricted it.
Yeah, so yeah, um, yeah, we have Mary, Mary Maxwell. I had a little laugh over that. I'll email that, ask what the blankets were for. Um, so. So anyway, I was like a donation for five hundred dollars to the Brown School. So I I just wanted to thank them for for doing that very generous and, you know, what they funds to good use for. As any audience with any other donations, we have to accept that. So I think we can do so tonight. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Make a motion to accept the donation from Making, the Making Ends Meet Foundation.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote, uh, Jen.
In favor?
Henry?
In favor.
Kate?
In favor.
Al, in favor. Um, the next item was just discussing the organization and membership of the anti discrimination group. Jen, is that something that we want to discuss tonight or would you like?
Yeah, no, I can discuss it. I, this was really um. Not necessarily how I reported it, but. This came out of um, the this, the last school committee meeting where we had presentation which we couldn't hear. Um, from Mary Bell Hapen, who is um, was speaking to us about. The services she could offer to help us in regards to anti-Semitism. Um, and we also received some correspondence from one of the members of the superintendent's um, anti discrimination task force. Um, that was um, fairly strongly worded and she's a member of that task force. So I really. Took it to heart um, in terms of some of her concerns. So um, my my thoughts from the beginning of this last year. I mean, the genesis of this goes back to two years, but last year when we formed this committee, originally I had. Thought that this should be a school committee advisory committee. Because from my perspective, the issues around anti-Semitism and anti discrimination are. Um, at our our level is our responsibility in regards to what we uh, have. As a culture and a climate in our school district. Um, however, you know, the um, the school committee, I mean, yeah, school committee advisory committee is subject to open meeting law. Um, the superintendent's committee is not. And in discussions with John, you know, he really felt that it was appropriate for. It to be a superintendent committee, which which it is. I just feel that. Um, I was sort of rethinking this and asking the committee to maybe rethink this because I feel strongly that we need to have. Um, a robust. Uh, process for dealing with this. And so, and I did have conversations with with John about this and and maybe what it is. Um, and I appreciate people's input, um, whether, you know, if it's a school committee advisory committee, then we would. We would be leading it and we would be. Um, determining, you know, what the goals are, what the deliverables are, what we're measuring and and reporting back to the committee. On the other hand, I think if we could also consider, you know, working with John and getting, you know, some more. Structure around that and really what we can expect because that was the message I heard from. Uh, this particular member of the committee and what I've heard from other members of this committee, um, and what I've heard from the community, frankly. Uh, that we have an obligation to, to ensure that we are um, making. Demonstrative and measurable and um, meaningful change in this area. In our culture, in our, in our climate. We have had um, two years of of very, very, you know, difficult conversations, difficult messages. Um, difficult experiences um, in our district and in our community. And we have an obligation to make change. So. That was the point of this discussion. You know, again, John, I don't know if you want to show, John and I had, did speak offline about it and I think John feels, you know.
I and and I appreciate, I appreciate the perspective, Jen. I appreciate having the conversations too. And I think. I just want to reiterate, you know, just kind of the genesis of this, as Jen said, was, you know, obviously prior to when I got here and when I got here, and there's a lot of stuff going on. And especially in regards to the anti-Semitism piece of the anti-discrimination. Um, arena and, you know, a lot of, you know, it seems as though. You know, folks are not happy with how quickly things move and I totally understand that. And um, you know, some of that is me learning this community. And, you know, what what this community, how the makeup is and 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 the passions that are out there and 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 everything else. And. And that takes a little bit of time, but realistically, the committee, I appreciate the thought that, you know, keeping it a superintendent committee. And the reason I think that that makes sense to me is that I, you know, we create the committee. We have discussions, I create safe space for folks to have conversations. I did that with the students that are, that have been part of the conversations. I've done that with adults. I think we had some good conversations that the issues that arise are. Not everyone has the same exact level of passion about certain things. So that's, that's for me to kind of navigate. Truly, one and two, um, I I will admittedly say that I didn't really, I wasn't able to throughout the. Last half of the year when I kind of really formulated the committee and started, we only met like three or four times between the middle of the year and the end of the year. Um. Yeah, it didn't gain a ton of traction, just just by by happenstance, really, but I think I need, I definitely need to do a better job of saying this is what we're working on. This is what we're doing. These are the deliverables, reporting back out to the school committee. And I appreciate that feedback and I think that helps me. And I'm I'm more than happy to take any. Constructive criticism about what you think, um, what folks thinks we need to address. The difficult piece that I found in this kind of committee is. Um, you know, when you have something that you're addressing kind of in a global way, and it's really this school culture stuff that needs to be addressed, which is. A much bigger, longer process. And then there's the immediate things that happen. You know, you may have a anti-Semitic event, you may have a racist event, you may have a. You know, um, it could be G T Q plus or uniform or any of those things, right? That you have to address in the moment, how do we address that? But underlying that is how do we um, establish processes and protocols? Um, with our admin teams and our teachers and and we've, we've done a lot of that work, played a lot of that groundwork. I feel really proud about that. Um, and I think folks will see kind of how that's metering out. What I know and I've heard a lot lately, like Jen jumped out that. Folks, some of the folks on the committee don't feel like they 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 have a good grasp on that piece yet and that that, you know, we need to do more different, better. And so I'm committed to that. I'm committed to continue to that. I didn't, I haven't, I haven't scheduled all the meetings yet because I wasn't sure how this conversation was going to go and I didn't want to. Start with all the meetings and then the committee say, oh, never mind, I have to do a subcommittee or something, change it. So I will do that um, by the, from early next week. Still going to get ready for school to do, um, and I'll set them all up. So I know. Um, you know, folks listening, those meetings will be set up, all those monthly and then as often as we need to, um, and part of that is. Uh, we look at the surveys we did, which were not well timed, um, and not well, you know, attended. So we will, we look at that. We'll look at the Miri Bar Hapen, we're going to talk about that in the committee. We're going to talk about some other resources that folks have, you know, got a lot of research, maybe L C G C, everything else. We'll look at stuff, um, that people brought to the table. We're also doing a lot of work with our deep, um, Dr. Dr. Danisa. Um, she's done a lot of work with with the district and the um. Admin team, she's doing some more um, work coming up this school year, which I'll talk more about when we, we just starting the conversation with her. But a lot of that will also dovetail with the anti-discrimination piece. Um, so. There's a lot of good things happening. I just need to kind of pull it together, synthesize it, present it to you guys. So you have, you you can have a. A deeper level of comfortability with what I am doing um, in the district in regard to anti-discrimination. So. That's my long story short.
So I'm only one person on this committee. I don't know if that's the will of this committee or this committee may not be interested in. This, what John's doing, I don't know. I am. I have committed to it. I think that's been pretty clear to people in this community. Um, and I would like to see um, more. Deliverables, more structure and more reporting to us, but I'm only one person, so.
Yeah, so I I agree with everything you said, Jen. It was very well said. But I'm still a little confused as to. The structure to best do that. And I think there's pros and cons in both ways. And the one thing I'm I'm a little bit concerned about. So I think. Even if it stays as is, I think we have to be much more involved around what our expectations are and making sure that we're working well together around that. But but my my concern and John, this might be a tough question, but. Uh, how important is it for people to feel free to kind of speak, you know, whatever is their lived experience or whatever it is? And would that possibly be compromised if we make it an open meeting?
A hundred percent, a hundred percent. Because one, there there will be people that are more than happy to speak their truth and I. And all the lived experience, shout from the rooftops, that's great. There's people that will not ever, ever, never, never do that anymore. And that would be missing a huge piece to what I think the work of the committee needs to do. And that I feel really strongly about that. Um, but again, will the committee, if if we want to change the structure, I mean, I'd have to think about. About what my my role in that would be. Um, but I I just, in my. Years of experience, I I find that when you have a, committees are always difficult because you have the different, you know, you have all the different, you know, um, personalities and stuff. But when there's important work to be done, it has to be done by committee. And, you know, whether you make it a committee of thirty people, which doesn't really get done, or you make it a. You know, committee of nine or twelve and you get more work done. I mean, that those are the conversations, right? And. From the very beginning, I said, you know, I was going to, right now I have three, three parents, three administrators, three teachers, and then the kid and the students and. I feel that that's a good, good amount of people, but I also said that we were pulling people. Into the committee and out of committee for resources when we need to and when, when it makes sense. And I'm still committed to doing that. So I have other people saying, why can't I be like me? I want to be like me. And we need to, like, I I really do. I need to get a better, you know, trajectory. And tell a committee what the trajectory is. And and then when we do pull people in for certain resources, share that out. This is why. When this is how, this is what we're doing. So I I agree with everything. I think it's, I think it's very important um, for me to do a better job with this committee. Um. I'm committed to doing that, so.
Yeah, I just also. Along with whatever, you know, sort of structure or deliverables, would like to also be able to hear from the committee. And not just from necessarily, and I don't know how that happened, whether it's, you know. Couple of times a year or something to to come to a school committee meeting, or maybe we invite a non-quorum number of committee members. To a meeting, I don't, or maybe to the beginning of a meeting, just to hear it out and then we, stuff, I don't know, somehow to be able to hear from the members of that committee.
How about, how about this, like, um, I can have those conversations with the committee and they can say, hey, you know, school committee wants to have a a report out and then, you know. Clearly, hearing from you, not just me, would be good. And and maybe they become part of the decision making. Because maybe it's, hey, some of the students come in and talk to you guys at one point and say, this is what we're doing. This is what we're feeling. This is why it's important to us. This is the work that we think we need to do. And then the adults to do the same, or do it together, whatever makes sense. But yeah, I I would agree, you know, and and what I can tell you, and I think I've said this before already, like, even like meeting with this, the group of students and and their lived experiences, how they share. It's so powerful and there's so much in-depth information and stuff that we can, we can work with. For the, their betterment in the schools and outside of schools and their social beings. And that's, that's what's really driving me in part and, you know, then the. Then the adults bring in their lived experience and how we dovetail. So there's a lot, there's a lot going on there, you know, but. It's important work, but yeah, I would agree. I think reporting out in a, you know, maybe quarterly or something to their. Or, you know, late fall and early spring or something to the committee in a kind of more global way other than me just saying, hey, we met four times and we talked about this. Yes.
I would actually like to ask that you come to a committee, you know, after whatever your first meeting. Of the year is with the anti-discrimination committee, um, with a report on sort of what the plan is for the year. Um, I think that these are, you know, really valid concerns. But that so much of the work that needs to happen here. Is operational, um, and our role as a committee really is to make sure. That the superintendent and the community understand. That this is a high priority for our district.
Agreed.
I also am curious how um. I I'm not sure where we are in your, the the district improvement plan is. I think slated at some point in the coming school year that, is there an opportunity for us to have input? As an individual school committee member, if I want to see something like this in the, where this is represented in the plan?
So, so what I can tell you is we're still working in the product. You know, the whole dip thing is, I've told you, there's many layers to it. We're in, we're in the. Uh, almost to the phase where it's going to go up to stat, all the staff. And I I plan for you, it's going to be that, you know, with the school year starting and. Then a part of a little bit, but in that, you know, we have that kind of built into a lot of that areas that make sense in the um, district improvement plan. And I'm sure when I get feedback from staff and then um, parents and guardians, they'll, they'll further. Identify where those pieces need to be, which is why we do all the input and feedback. And then the school committee is kind of like the, like the last stop, the stop. Once once I have all the input that I bring it to you guys, and then certainly that's, that's your role to look at and say. This looks great, these are all great, or yeah, these are great, but I really want to see this, this and this. And it doesn't get approved, it's you guys feel comfortable with it. So there's, there's. Multiple opportunities for feedback input to the district improvement plan. And anti-discrimination language is already built into a lot.
You see that in there? I mean, you, you seeing that in there?
I I've been in there for a lot and I've had some feedback. Where else to put it already from admins and central admins. So, yeah, I feel, I feel, I feel good.
Because that's sort of the next sort of step, right? You have this committee that almost, you know, feeds into the, whatever we're calling it, the strategic plan. And then that is embedded. So everything we're measuring.
Be part of the plan and then the plan.
Your roles.
You know, just continue to review the plan and then, you know, be three year plan. So as it gets updated, we update it and then um. Yeah, it it should, you know, it, I'm. Yeah, I'll catch you later. Yes.
That's all, that was the, that was the question.
And if it's not in there enough or in the right places, we'll ensure.
So that was the point. So I don't. I'm not looking to make a motion. I don't think that that's necessary to sort of either elevate this or make this into a school committee. Um, advisory committee, but. Those were my thoughts in terms of the current.
And I think the potential is still there. We might decide to go that route at a future date. So I'm I'm hearing that, uh, please correct me if I'm. Not relaying this on, but we want to hear after your your next meeting, uh, John, it sounds, it's very important to us. And then I think as a school committee, we need to do some work on perhaps. Our expectations around uh, this group.
So, so what I can also say is, you know, this, this would be a great. One of my great goals, that one of my goals would be grateful, one of my goals, or some of my great goals, well, you know, um, so. Yes, there you go. As we get to that, um, you, you know, I think that that's, that's something I was already kind of going to craft anyway. So, um. And then that holds my feet to the fire as well, having as one of my evaluation goals or part of one. Um. So, yeah, I I was thinking that that's a good way in in incorporating the dip and. You guys setting expectations, um, all those things I think are positive. And quite frankly, we get through, you know, coming up next year and you. And you don't think it's going well, or you're not liking what you're hearing. Certainly, it's your right problem to say, John, you know. I'm pulling, I'm pulling the plug, we're sending in, you know, sending in the backup. So, you know. Do what we need to do. But I I'm confident that we're going to be.
Alright, thank you. Um. And Kate's going to talk to us about a year-long agenda?
Yes, um, so as we're looking, you know, sort of to planning for the year ahead. Um, M A S C recommends that school committee chairs use a year-long agenda when planning. Meeting calendars and whatnot. Um, and. I've been thinking that it would actually be helpful. Not just to limit that to the chair, but to have it be something that the full committee participates in. Um, and that we're publicizing to the community. And so in the, in the share drive were three. Examples that I pulled from different districts because I thought they. They were all doing the same thing in a different way. Um, and I was. Thinking we could have a conversation tonight as a committee about. What would be most helpful to us as committee members, to our. Um, community and looking at this, I think both because it helps us organize our work. And it helps the community understand, you know, what it is that we plan to do for the year ahead. Um, so the ones that I put in the, in the share driver from um. Lexington. Andover, which I'm sorry is in two parts because I couldn't get it to download. So I just had to do screenshots. Um, and then Greenfield.
I think it would be helpful to also see our calendar.
I'm not entirely sure. Are you talking about our?
We have a year, we have a yearly calendar. We have a year, we have a yearly calendar. So, that would have. No. Yeah, we've had it for years.
So where is that?
Well, I, if you had asked me, but it was in my, I've had it for the last year, so.
Good, um. So if you could share.
That's what I worked with John on for the last year, so.
Yeah, so it sounds like we have something to work with, but it wasn't. Uh, just it wasn't publicized, though, is it? Or is it on our website in any capacity?
Nope.
Okay.
It just, it was a yearly calendar that we've used for years in terms of what meetings we, you know, what items, it was more of a, you know, similar to this. What general categories of. Um. Mostly around what things need to be voted on, around the budget, around the warrant, um, school county, there's a number of things that have. Timeliness to them that need to be deliberated and voted on throughout the year. Then there are things that you do every meeting, which I don't know necessarily need to be in there, but. You know, we vote the bills every week, we vote that, or every month, um, we vote. Um, you know, things every meeting. And then beyond that, then things sort of can happen, sort of ad hoc, so.
Kate, did you get these calendars off of these?
They were on, I found them by looking through their website. The Andover one is actually on their. School committee page of their website. Um, and then the Greenfield and Lexington ones are sort of embedded within their. You know, them, the meeting materials, um. And came up when I was.
So these are, these are very similar to ours. So, I mean, I can share ours. Their formatting are a little different, but they, we all do the same things around the same time. Um, so.
So my. Interest for this conversation was not so much in the timing of things, because I I do agree that that's sort of set. Um, but I think that each one of these takes a different approach um in sort of how. They frame the work that the committee does around these items. Um, and so that was sort of what I was. Looking at and thinking about is just, you know, for example, Lexington, their rhythm of the year really describes. The work in a different way than um the Greenfield. Your long agenda was, does. So I was curious what. Other committee members thought about those different approaches and. What might be be most effective for us?
Yeah, it's, it's interesting. I like the rhythm of the school year, so. You know, Henry, you might, you you have a better, but it looks already done by graphical designers, uh, but I I find it hard to follow. I like the more. Boxy by month uh elimination, which I think are. We're close to having. Um, so I think if we we get what we have and put it in a format more like one of those.
Yep.
Uh, and then I think what's the most important part is having it. Available to the, to the community on our website.
Yeah, agreed. And I think the Lexington one has, they're sort of organized by theme and season, which I, it's a little tricky to be that.
Yeah.
You know. To put things into boxes that way. So I I I like the simple bullet points that they're providing in the months in the Greenfield version, but yeah, it'd be good to get this. Up on our.
Okay.
On our website.
Great, thank you for that feedback.
Okay, um. So I know that we, we did um vote on. In terms of subcommittees and liaison updates, having some monthly updates, meeting minutes, and regularly scheduled meetings. Um, and I know that we're going to move more towards that, um, at least personally, I think that. Um, this will be a little easier to do and enforce, right? When we have a new member, we have all our committees fully staffed. Uh, but given that, are there any? Updates from any of the subcommittees? Or liaisons for tonight?
As Jen mentioned, the policy subcommittee is meeting next week, um, so we'll have. More to update on after we do that.
Did have my notes, I noticed you had some like three or four meetings set up, so you're you're moving towards the regularly scheduled meetings or?
Yes.
Also. Uh, kudos for that, um. All right. All right, if there's nothing more around subcommittees and liaison updates. Uh, we'll move to uh closing business? So any new business?
I have two items. Um, the first is um the um. Task force against discrimi- against antisemitism from the State House of Representatives, uh, well, the state legislature. Voted to make recommendations to DESI for K twelve, their resolution um for uh. K twelve uh recommendations for um. Focusing and um. Approaching antisemitism in the schools. I don't know whether DESI, I don't know what their status is on whether they're planning to adopt that or not, or when they would be planning to adopt it. I would like our committee to review it and consider adopting it in Marblehead. Um, so I'm putting that out there as potential agenda item. I can talk to you about it.
Yeah, we had, I'm sure I had it updated yesterday, but I was otherwise, I can press, I read the notes, um, so I don't know if I got to that on the agenda, um, so I'll, I'll look at that on the DESI side, but.
I would like to put it on agenda if that's the will of the committee.
Jen. I'm just wondering, should this be? The the team that we just talked about should first address this and understand it and make a proposal to us? Or should we? I'm just worried that we get a little disorganized between us and the the committee of the.
So these are recommendations to DESI. Um, and I, I don't know whether DESI, you don't can. Go back a bit, I don't know if DESI is gonna adopt them, but if they do, my guess is that it would be at the earliest twenty six, twenty seven. So I don't think they're gonna adopt, you know, um, a new set of guidelines, you know, in the middle of what is ostensibly the it it start of school year. Um, I would like us to consider reviewing them and adopting them here in Marblehead. Um, so we could test this to the anti discrimination committee, I think that's appropriate to look at it, and if they think that it makes sense, then come back and make, I just don't want. Too much time to go by, but that could be something, you know, to address it here first.
Definitely.
What about, what about both? What about, I I have no idea, I have, I would very much support us reviewing it as a committee.
Yep, I have been raised the.
And then obviously, you're you're the test team to look at it and make specific recommendations to us. But yeah, I would, I would, uh, I think. You know, Jen, would you mind facilitating that discussion at our, our next meeting? Okay, great.
Um, the second item that I wanted to bring up, um, the committee to consider. Um, is in light, in fact, of what um Tom McMahon spoke earlier as a member of the Board of Health. Um, in light of the event that took place earlier this week, um, the tragic event that took place. Uh, you know, clearly, we have experienced. Too many of these in the lifetime that I've lived here in Marblehead. Um, and there've been multiple of these over the, over the decades. And I feel that as leaders here in Marblehead, we have a responsibility. Um, particularly as school leaders, um, to try to mitigate and try to. Lead our young people in. Understanding what. The risks are and and what the dangers are, and try to do what we can to try to stop this from ever happening. So I had a conversation um with Tom McMahon, I had a conversation with one of the members of the Wreck and Park. And between the and the select board members, so between select board, Board of Health, Hark and Rec, and school committee, I think. First responders, police, um, you know, I I think to consider. Trying to pull together a leadership group in town to at least just start having a conversation about this. I have no idea where it lead, I have no idea. Um. You know, what that would look like, but I would like to. Be part of that, and I would like us to, maybe we are the ones that have to come forward and try to organize this. So I'm throwing that out as something to um the committee to consider. I think if we were to. To try to do that, to just reach out and have sort of maybe an initial conversation with with members of these different boards and other leaders in town. Um, we're not gonna have any quorum issues, we can have a, you know, meeting without, it doesn't have to be an open meeting, um, and just start this a conversation about what. We might be able to do. To ensure that this doesn't ever happen to another. Young person in our town.
Jen, the board you met or the folks that you talked to, uh, including Tom, was, were any of them select, uh, from on the select board?
I spoke to one member.
One member, okay.
Yeah, who was your staff. I didn't speak to the chair. I mean, the the right thing to do is to go to the chair of each of these boards, um, and just see if there's an appetite for that. And I think that there are. The folks that I, some of the folks I spoke to, like Tom, not necessarily chairs, but showed an interest. So I think, and and I, and the ones I picked, I mean, we can. You know, I'd invite everybody um to the table, and I think we need to have parents there and 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 maybe clergy, but, you know, when I think about between the schools. And the Wreck and Park Department, we touch, you know, for almost every young, young person in this town. Um, and even if you talk about the JCC and the Y, it's, you know, it won't, at some point, um, the Board of Health is key. Um, to helping the. Maintain the health, mental and physical health of our young people. Um, the select board is the executive board of the town. I mean, they're the ones who really frankly ought to be leading this. Um, and then, um. The police and fire, you know, clearly, uh, without, without a doubt, um, need to, you know, need to be there. So. I'm willing to. You know, just make some calls and and report back maybe and just say, you know, I I spoke to, you know, formally to these boards and they are willing to do it. You know, and then maybe we, in our next meeting, can um, uh, greenlight an initial conversation.
And I.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I think it's a great. Out to some board members as well. So, and as Tom said, they they want to help, and we really appreciate that, so.
And I don't know what it would look like, and maybe we rotate it, I think, you know. Yeah, we're probably not gonna be doing these as necessarily open meetings, but I think if we have representation, we keep it below form, um, and then we can come back and we can talk about. Do each of our respective boards and say, you know, here are the ideas we entered about, here are some things that with our administrator, the school department can do. Here are some things Wreck and Park can do. Here are some things Health, the Health Department can do, and we at least just get the conversation.
I really appreciate the sentiment of this committee needing to absolutely the way. Um, I've been thinking a lot this week about how. The schools can't solve this by ourselves. This really is the whole community, and we're a big part. Of this, and we have, you know, an ability to touch these students, but this is not something that our schools or our school committee can do ourselves.
Like, and I don't know, you know, if even as leaders, we are going to be able to. I I do believe we can make a difference. We may not be able to prevent something like this, but we can at least try.
So Jen, a- along these lines, um. I have no issue reaching out to a chair of another committee if you want, or what might even be a better way to do this is. You know, having you represent the school committee in this regard and and speaking for us. I have no problem with that.
Maybe what I'll do is, I'll make a few calls, but maybe I'll do an email and I can copy you on that to say, you know, I was tasked with the chair, with the committee. Um, and just see what kind of a response we get, and we just start some conversations and then, and I'll report back.
Yeah, we'll discuss it our next, September fourth.
Yeah.
If it's, if there's enough to report by then, whenever, you know.
It's a tough time of year with the, you know, and in holiday, the Labor Day and everything, but yes, I will report back, um, and we'll, you know, we'll go from there and. You know, and and also, I do think clearly we're gonna need support from our administrators, you know, whether it's the Health Department, school superintendent, chief of police. Um, uh, the Wreck and Park, um, uh, director, um. You know, like I said, you know, clergy, youth groups, whatever it may be, um, the folks who are. With our young people every day and are on the front lines, um. Tell, will be with eyes on our students to be able to tell us what they think meaning.
So Jen, you're spearheading this. Would you object to other members of the committee reaching out to different boards as well?
No, it would be great.
Okay, thank you.
Really great. And it starts this, and then I think, you know, over the course of maybe the fall, we'll maybe start to get a little organization to it. We'll, we'll see, we'll see if it gets some traction. Thank you for creating that. Great. I appreciate the committee considering it.
Any other new business?
The only thing I wanted to say under correspondence, I mean, we haven't moved on is, um, would, I would, I don't know, I can make a motion. I I'd like. The committee to send a letter of condolence to the family of. Um, Savannah Getchel. I don't know if the.
Uh, we're doing, doing a home visit with them tomorrow.
Okay. But I think it is, it is appropriate for us to write a letter. I don't know if, I mean, whatever, I can help you with it or whatever, just, just to.
Sure.
Thank you.
So Henry's gonna, you're gonna pen that?
Yeah.
Send it out, okay?
Yeah, I'll share it.
Normally, it would be probably signed by the chair.
Yeah, just let me know and. All right, any other correspondence?
Okay, I am looking for a motion and vote to meet in executive session for the following two reasons. The first is pursuant to chapter thirty A, section twenty one A three, purpose three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with unit A. Of the Marblehead Teachers Association is an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. And the chair so declares without intent to return to open session. The second reason. Will be pursuant to chapter thirty A, section twenty one eighty three, purpose three, to discuss litigation. Kelly Ferretti at Al versus Marblehead Public Schools, John Robideau and Al Williams. Essex Superior Court, as an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the school committee, and the chair so declares.
So moved.
Seconded.
Uh, before we go into, is Thatcher joining us?
He, he may. It, uh, he had some other things that he was trying to move to to be at the meeting.
I think it's very important. That he, he should be here.
And we can discuss that once we're in executive session. Was there a second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Henry. Okay, the committee will now be meeting an executive. I'm sorry, thank you. Um, a roll call vote. Uh, Jen?
In favor.
Henry?
Favor.
Kate?
In favor.
Al, in favor, the motion passes, passes four to zero. So the committee will now be meeting an executive session pursuant to chapter thirty A, section twenty one eighty three, purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with unit A of the Marblehead Teachers Association. As an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares without intent to return to open session. We will also be meeting an excessive executive session pursuant to chapter thirty A, section twenty one eighty three, purpose three. Discuss litigation, Kelly Ferretti at Al versus Marblehead Public Schools, John Robideau and Al Williams. Essex Superior Court, as an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the school committee, and the chair so declares. Right? Thank you all. Relocate to another room.
Al, you just might, um. Look at your email from ten twenty three, twenty four, you have a copy of the school committee.